Call this German Township Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. If you could please see it and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands,
We're doing the pledge of grace.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Heiston, can you take the roll, please?
I have to unmute first. Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
And Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Right, at this time, it is the visitor comment section. As usual, if you have a comment or question or concerns, this is the time when you need to come forward. So if you have any visitor comments or questions or concerns this evening.
I've got something, if you don't mind.
It's fine, go ahead.
Yeah, Mark Cross, 7444, South Stivers Road, Germantown. First, there has been some question about how many acres in Germantownship are owned by the metro parks. And this was brought up again by the zoning commission meeting. And thanks to some hard work by Laura Dima and Chad Gilbert, we finally have an answer. There's actually three entities that actually own various parcels of the land, two of them we kind of knew, the Five Rivers Metro Park, Miami Conservancy District, and the Montgomery County Park District, which we had no idea who that was, but now we know. So including the recent purchase of the portion of land along Anthony Road that is in Germantownship, the total is 2,443 acres. So, you know, it's difficult to calculate how much tax revenue we've lost from that, but it's, I'm sure it's significant. So I guess Germantownship is not going to be reimbursed for any of that law. At least if the trustees are asked why the general fund doesn't have the funds to fund certain projects, especially like contribute to the road fund, this is the explanation you can give people. The 2,443 acres are now part of the metro parks and not part of our tax base. So anyway, my next question is, did anyone attend the Germantown Council meeting on Monday? Mark, Heiston?
I did not, Mark.
Okay, so I did. There's just a couple of things that, some information that was discussed during the meeting that may affect Germantownship. First, the city will be issuing a municipal bond in the amount of $4.6 million to pay for the municipal building and the fire EMS police building. Projects. And Mr. Raymert and Mr. Heiston may have more knowledgeable in the process, but they started to, they explained the process of looking for an underwriter, using your credit agency to determine the credit worthiness of the city, and that will determine the interest rate that they're going to have to pay. And then they'll finally issue the bond. My concern is, I guess, with such a large amount of money, will the city have any trouble paying it back? And would a possible bond be involving all of Germantownship should be somewhere down the road? I don't know. That's something just to keep in mind, I think. The council also approved about $330,000 in change orders for the project, and no details about what the change order is entitled or what that entailed. So it's kind of hard to say whether that was for the entire project. $330,000 is quite a big change order, or was it just for just the last month of change orders or whatever. So again, unfortunately, they don't really discuss or tell you what those change orders involve. So again, just something to be aware of. Finally, although this doesn't involve the township, the city is placing a 2.5 mil additional levy on the November ballot for police funding. They may receive possibly $2 million from the opioid settlement being negotiated with several large pharmaceutical companies. So I don't know what the status is that is, but they did mention that. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other citizens that would like to come forward?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm excited to see the number of attendees we have this evening, particularly some who haven't been here before. And I really am glad you're here. Thank you.
I agree. It's nice. I feel like we have a lot more people, unless when we're virtual than when we're in person. So it's great.
David, would you be kind enough to do the formality of name and address?
David Giron, 14239 Pfeiffer Road.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens? I'm not seeing anyone unmuting. Haley, do you see anyone?
I do not. Let me take a couple of these call in, like on the phone. I'm going to unmute everybody on phones. Give them a minute chance. Let's see here. All right. So I do believe everybody that is on a phone is now unmuted. So if you'd like to do that again.
Any citizens that would like to come forward? Visitor comments?
All right, I'm going to go ahead and mute everybody again.
Thank you. Want to make sure everybody has an opportunity if they would like.
Right.
All right, we're going to move on to the fiscal officers' report. Mr. Heiston.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. First of all, we have the minutes from last month's meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I didn't see any changes that needed to be made.
Mr. Stubbs, Mr. Raymert, any changes?
No, I didn't have any changes.
I have no changes.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. That was not an easy one because the recording wasn't available to be reviewed. So I did it completely based on my notes. And, oh, I take a lot of notes. That was an involved meeting, so I'm glad it turned out okay. All right, I have sent you ahead of time the financial reports. You have the fund status report as of the end of July, and you have the cash activity in each fund for the seven months ended July 31st. You have the receipts that came in during July, and you have the payments during July. And Mr. Raymert sent an email, which I responded to. I don't know whether Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs, you've seen the response, but he did question, just for informational purposes, the purpose for some of our payments this month. And I appreciate that you took the time to do that. So you can check your emails, and you'll be able to see what each of those were for.
Yes, Mark, thanks for sending that back and Mr. Holbrook for adding additional color on one of those. You know, from time to time, I'm probably going to do that as we get going here, just to make sure I understand what we're spending on and getting up to speed. So I appreciate that. Thanks for appeasing me.
Glad to do it. And I never have a problem answering your question about anything that we do here in the fiscal office. So with that in mind, I also want to point out specifically that we do have a new fund. That is the Corona's Fund, and it's the money from the CARES Act, and it is fund number, sorry, let me get that for you, 202272, the Corona Relief Fund. As you all know, money came down, trickled down from the federal government to the state, to the county, and ultimately to all municipalities and townships in the county. Our portion here at Germantownship was $26,076.88. That money can be spent for any specific expenses related to Corona virus relief. It cannot be used for revenue replacement. So the fact that some of our funds that we expected, such as the gas tax or things like that that are down because of the virus, we will not be able to use the coronavirus money to help replenish those funds. It would have to be for a specific cost. And I believe we're going to discuss that particular fund a little bit later in the meeting. But the process is between now and October 15th, we can appropriate any funds that we plan to use. As of October 15th, any unappropriated funds will be returned to the county. And then we have between October 15th and the end of December to actually spend those funds. And anything that is unspent at the end of the year will get returned to the Treasurer of State. With that in mind, if I could get a motion to approve the payments for the month, my, my report says June, it's actually for July, the payments for July, which are Lawrence 50122 through 50160, and vouchers 378 through 459, and those vouchers represent payroll direct deposit, payroll and tax withholding, electronic fund transfers, and other electronic payments.
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then forwards? Okay, thank you very much. We have been, ever since the pandemic started, we've been running our meetings virtually, or sometimes virtual and in person, but always using WebEx. We have all of those recordings from those meetings. And I would like to suggest that the trustees approve posting those to the township website to allow the residents, if they wish, to sign in at any point in time and watch the meeting. This is something that the city of Germantown's been doing for a number of years, and they pay the Miami Valley Communications Council, I think, a fair amount of money to do that. This would not probably cost us anything other than the basic WebEx fee that we paid for a license to use it for a year. But I do think this probably needs the trustees' approval, if it's something that you would like to do.
Yeah, I'm absolutely not opposed to that whatsoever. My only question would be, hopefully this pandemic ends sometime, and we get to go back in person. Would we then just go back to our regular posting the minutes after that, since there would not be the recording if we're not doing both?
Well, I would suggest that even once the pandemic ends, that we continue to do the in-person meetings along with the WebEx recording. I think that's very beneficial for those people who, as of tonight, we have, what, 25 people, I think, on this meeting, who can, who might not come to an in-person meeting, but could watch or look later on and watch it after the fact. So that would be my suggestion, but obviously the trustees will decide that when the time comes.
Could I also chime in on that?
Sure.
So just from my experience, I also listened to a city council meeting last month while I was getting other things done. And I literally just called in and listened to it live as it was going on. So I do think that it has helped the community a lot to be able to just listen in or call in, you know, and there's some people that are disabled. They can't get out to get to our meetings. And I just think it's a great thing for us to be able to let them just listen in.
I am comfortable with that. I don't know how Mr. Raymert or Mr. Stubbs feels, but I have no problem with them being posted on our website. As long as we have those capabilities, I think that's great.
I'm aligned. I had the same question Abra did. What would happen after the pandemic? But I agree. I think as long as it's simple enough for us to set up the WebEx, once we get back in person, set our computers in front of us, I guess, we can, we can figure that out and keep going with the WebEx route being cost efficient and easier to reach more people. So I'm happy with that.
I think the best thing to do for this would be to have a motion to approve it so that there's documentation that the trustees have agreed that we will post these on the website.
I'll make a motion that our WebEx recorded meetings be posted on the website available for citizens to view at any time.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
I wish you could go back a year and have a year's worth of meetings on there, but yeah, no problem with it at all.
And we can post all the meetings except the one from July. Unfortunately, that reporting won't be available to be posted, but all the others can be, since we started this back in, what was it, April, I believe? Might even have been March, March or April.
I believe we had already had our March meeting prior to the shutdown. Let me look.
I thought we squeezed it in there by a few days, and then it all kind of happened.
You're right.
Yeah, so.
It was right after that.
Yeah, our March meeting was on the 9th, and then the shutdown started on the 13th.
So with the first motion made and a second, and we, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, very good. Just a couple of things to note that have happened that I've been involved with this month. The US Census Bureau asked the township to validate the township boundaries. Abra signed that validation, and I sent that out to the Census Bureau. I also sent a response to Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keith waiving a hearing before the county budget commission later this month at their annual meeting, and that would concern next year's tax, information, budget, inside millage, and so forth. On July 22nd, I had a phone call with Montgomery County Auditor Keith involving the 2020 county real estate revaluation. And then the following week, on July 28th, I was one of 80-some people who attended a webinar that Auditor Keith did with all Montgomery County elected officials. Perhaps some of you were on that call too, I'm not sure. But overall, in the county, through this revaluation process, and you probably read this in the paper, but the values went up 7%, which is the highest increase since 2005. And essentially, the values in the county have almost reached the point where they were just prior to the recession of two, starting back in, what, 2008? Here in Germantownship, in the unincorporated area, our values increased by 13.52%, which is the highest of any of the townships in the county. Now, those numbers do not include the agricultural land, which is under the CAUV or the current Agricultural Use Value Program. And Auditor Keith estimated that the values of those agricultural properties are going to go down by 25% or more. So I don't know what the final figure will be for the township as a whole. What we've seen at this point is simply residential and the little bit of commercial that we have. We also received the draft report from the Auditor of State during July that summarized the results of the agreed-upon procedures review that we had done here in the township in June, which covered the years 2018 and 2019. And I see that my predecessor, Mark Keener, is on the call. And Mark, no major issues were raised. Good job. And there is an auto rep presentation letter, which we will be returning to them as soon as Abra, you're able to sign that. And thank you for doing that in advance. Thanks for the kind words, Mark. And since you're talking, Mark, I also have an apology to give to you. Last month, when we were discussing the Reserve Peace Officer Memorial Fund Board, I had made a comment that even though there was a motion back in January at the organizational meeting, appointing Lynn Cleveland and yourself to that board, they, I had said they were not in the minutes, that motion. I was wrong. They are indeed in the minutes. I just simply skipped over them when I reviewed the minutes. So wanted to make that point to everyone. And with that, I am done. Mrs. Reed.
All right, thank you. All right, Chief.
All right, police cruiser bids. We sent out an initial bid specification in May. It was not acted upon. So in early July, we sent out bid specifications again. This time, we hand-delivered ones to Interstate Ford and Lebanon Ford. Attached, you will find the bids returned, only Interstate and Lebanon return bids. This bid was for two cruisers in 2021, which will get us back to where we need to be between us falling behind around 2008 and with Ford and their handling of manufacturing police cruisers here the last year and a half, two years. That should get us back to where we need to be. As far as the bids, I would suggest accepting Lebanon's Ford, which is $3,689.92 less than Interstate Ford's bid. But I'll leave that up to you.
I do have a quick question, Chief. I know, I think it was a year or two ago, there was like a lag behind. Are you still finding that to be true with other departments, that it's taking some time to get the cruisers back once you have ordered them?
Yeah, the one that we did last year that we got the bids for in 2019, or to be, we were supposed to buy in 2019, didn't get made until June, I think, 9th of 2020. So we're, really, I think we would be on track right now if Ford wouldn't have had their problems. But with getting it to next year, that will definitely put us in the running. I know a lot of police departments are still having problems with Ford, and in some cases, it's driven departments away from Ford to other vehicles. But we found that when we do get Fords, they're a good product, and they serve us well.
Just out of curiosity, when do you feel like you need to have this approved for the 2021 two cruisers?
I think we need to get the, we need to respond to them by September, or the 1st of September, in order to get that process. Otherwise, it may push us back out again in the years to, you know, for the, for the year of the, or for the manufacturing side of it.
Okay. I'll just make a few comments, and I'm obviously new to this, but I think, you know, after we had talked and you were explaining to me about, you know, getting the cruisers and getting back on the rotation, I think it made a lot of sense. And I do understand it. I don't have much to benchmark it. I did find out that Miami Township, I believe, has gone to Durango's because they believe they're cheaper than the Explorers, I guess. And it, I don't know if that helps out with the lead time. You're saying, you know, Ford is a little bit slower. I don't know if you have a perspective or if you've looked at the Durango's, Chief, if you have a perspective as to why you might want to stay with the Explorers.
It's just a, the quality that we do get when they do deliver is, I think, impeccable. I've never experienced the Durango side of things, but I do know that the non-law enforcement side of Durango's, I've heard people complain about them. So that's, but I only have hearsay to go by. I don't know, you know, I don't have any statistics or facts. I do know that we have always gone with Ford, and Ford has delivered. When, we went away, early 2000s, we did Chevy Impalas and had a horrible maintenance issues. But with the Fords, you know, even when we do have a recall or anything, Middletown Ford's close, we weren't, they, they treat us very good. I think Ford is a, a good on, at least on the police side of things, when they do make them.
And Jeremy services all our stuff.
Could you repeat that, Jake?
Yeah, I said Jeremy, Jeremy and the road department service our vehicles. I think consistency for Jeremy, I think, would be preferred, I would guess.
May I speak?
Yeah.
I agree with Chief. We've worked on the Ford Explorers for quite a while now, and I think, nothing against Dodge, I mean, I drive one, but if you look at like the fire department's Durango, there's nothing left of it. It's totally rusted out, and we don't have that problem with the Explorers. None of the Explorers that, that I think Chief has gotten rid of have ever been excessively rusty. So with that being said, obviously, it's a whole lot easier to maintain that's a vehicle that isn't rusted out underneath than one that is. So that's my opinion on it. I, you know, it's up to the board, but I think that money you save by going the Durango route will come back, just like it did with the Chevy Impalas. They paid significantly less to get a bunch of Impalas, and they ended up being junk. So that's my opinion.
I agree with Jeremy.
Chief, I just want to check, so they would need to be ordered or approved by this meeting, correct? And then ordered somewhere between this meeting and first week of September, we'll say. And then when is the turnaround time? When do you anticipate putting these into the rotation?
I would hope that they are manufactured and out by this time next year. So you're talking a year out or so.
So this money would really come out of the 2021 budget?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and listen, I totally defer to Jeremy and Chief Anzak about which product to use. I mean, obviously, it's their product. The only other thing I'll say is, you know, I haven't had sufficient amount of time to look at the budget, the revenues coming in for the police budget, and what we'll have in 2021, along with the expenditures. I did briefly, you know, talk to Mark on getting some five-year historical information on all the budgets, both the revenues in and the expenditures we've had over the last five years for all the funds. And I've trended them out, and there is growing revenue with the police, but we've also had significantly growing expenditures too. And, and so I haven't had the time to sit down and think, you know, how much more would, would two cruisers next year in comparison to what we've done this year and in prior years, what would that do for the budget? So Chief, again, I rely on you to tell us if you feel like your budget's set to substantially carry, you know, the two cruisers next year without issue, you know, being this far in advance of 2021 and without me spending time, you know, looking through the line item detail on that.
And I went, there we go. Was about out of power all of a sudden. I think one thing that's going to help us next year, and one reason that I'm doing it now, is Mrs. Rohrbach's moving on. We're going to save significant amounts with her. So that's going to help us with the offset of getting the two cruisers. Am I on?
Yes, yes, you're on. Yeah, I can hear you.
You are, and I did hear your response, and, and that, I understand what you're saying. I'm trying to balance here, you know, completely trusting you without doing my own due diligence on exactly what we've spent over the last couple of years. So I do trust you and your judgment, and I'm just trying to think through that, you know, with additional spend next year, what it will look like. I guess my, my thing would to say, you know, based on what we chatted, you guys are driving somewhere around 25,000 miles a year per cruiser. And, and I know you don't want to stretch that a long period of time, but I guess it isn't going to substantially set us back. If we waited one more month where we looked at it, maybe you and I and Mark or whatever, we have a discussion to make sure that we feel like we have the right amount of budget for next year, and that we feel like there's no problem with this, or you feel like that's really going to push back the timeline here?
I'm afraid, my only concern would be because of Ford and the problem we've had in the last year and a half or so with them getting it, getting the car manufactured, is that it would push us into maybe even next year. I don't know for a fact, but I do know that, you know, if you but I do know that, you know, if you don't get it back in, you know, like first of September, um, that's typically when it does get pushed back.
Chief, wasn't there a time, wasn't there a time where they weren't uh, taking any orders at all for for police cruisers? So.
Yeah, there was a time that they weren't, but that was about it a year ago or so, a year, uh, nine months ago.
I didn't know if that had anything to do with waiting, you know, if that could happen again. I mean, if you, if you didn't get it done in a timely manner, could it, could that happen again, I guess? Cause I know they're still having kind of backlog issues with getting police cruisers built.
Right, and I think that uh, you know, some of your bigger departments, I think, I don't know for a fact, but I think when you're a small department, uh, if you're a big department and you're ordering twenty cruisers, you're probably going to get preference over the, the little tiny department that's order one or two.
Right.
So I'll, I'll make two last comments and I'm ready to make a decision. I guess Jeremy, from your perspective and Chief Anzic, you know, if, if we were to get pushed back six months, is that going to be a problem with servicing the, the existing patrol cars that we have, the cruisers today? Um, and the other thing I would say is I also think there's an alternative of, we can approve the one right now because that's consistent with what we've done over the last several years, it seems like. And then uh, we can make sure that we're all holding hands on the additional cruiser, that everything will be sufficient for that. Um, and, and then move forward with an, with another one in a month or two at a, at a future meeting unless that really changes something.
I'll leave that up to Chief Anzic. I mean, I don't, from a, from a maintenance standpoint, I don't, I don't see there much, being much difference in a month, but um, my only concern is if getting the manufacturing side of it, you know, I, I would hate to see one show up in a year and then that other one get pushed back a year and a half, but that's up to the board and up to Chief Anzic to make that decision.
A- and that's fine. I guess my question would be, uh, have we discussed this before, Abra and Jake? I'm relying on you guys to fill me in if, if we have. I mean, bringing this up and then needing to approve it this month, I feel like is a little bit quick for me and that's because I, I have an inadequacy on knowing all of what we've done in the past. But if you guys want to bring me up to speed with what you know from the past.
Well, I guess, previous to this meeting, have we discussed these cars? No, um. I'm sorry, what?
Approved it in January for the budget of 2020.
These don't come out of the budget until 2021, so I don't think they've been approved yet. Is that correct, Chief?
Well, yeah, we have a car that we got this year that further on in my report, we will get to, but this is for next year.
And we are talking about next year's budget, so we have not done anything about next year's budget yet. However, whatever decision we make tonight or whenever you make it, will have to be reflected in the Chief's budget for 2021.
And this is the question, the question is, are we going to get a better, better deal with two or are we buying an individual car twice?
That, that's my only concern is that when we put the bids out, we asked for two cruisers. I don't know if the bids they returned, they, they say they're for two. So I don't know if we went back to them and said, well, we'll take one if that changes the price.
Sure will. I'm good to make the resolution to approve purchasing both cars.
The resolution number seventeen.
I'll introduce resolution 17, 2020, a resolution to accept the bid, actually two police cruisers for 2021.
Is there a second to the motion for a resolution seventeen?
Here's what I'll say. I'm going to second this because I trust Chief Anzic. But what I'm going to say is in the future, I want to make a clear point that I would love for us to be able to discuss these types of things more than one meeting or two before we make a decision to spend $66,000 of our German Township funds. I think it's a, a little bit quick, um, and definitely deserves and merits a little bit more research on the behalf of the trustees. Um, and, and making sure that especially in a future fund that hasn't been approved, that, that we chat these things a little bit in more detail. So I, I'm, I'm happy to second this out of trust completely for the, for the Chief and knowing that he runs uh, this department, has been here a long time. But I, I do ask that if in the future, we could all bring these types of things a little bit sooner for review, so we have a little bit of time for discussion. Maybe a few months to review such a significant spend.
I understand.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion of resolution seventeen? If you're ready, I, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Stubbs? Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen is approved.
Thank you. Um, the newest police cruiser, as I mentioned, uh, has arrived. Um, it's currently at Yipe Stripes being marked. Uh, we have an arrangement with Yipes that when they're done with it, they will transfer it over to K E Rose for the in, uh, equipment install. Um, again, it was ordered, I want to say, uh, 2019, um, late spring, early summer, and didn't get manufactured till June of this year. So, but we did, we do have it and it will be put into service here shortly. Um, last I have is the police clerk job posting. I believe uh, you, the trustees reached, emailed uh, the posting on August 3rd. And we ended up uh, sending it on eight-six to Miami Valley, excuse me, newspapers. That includes Germantown Press, Miami'sburg, West Carrollton News, Centerville Dispatch, Franklin Chronicle and Springboro Star Press, which will each, it'll be advertised in each of those, which hopefully will draw a good pool. We did not include the Dayton Daily News because in the past, we have not had uh, very good luck with advertising through the Dayton Daily News. So like, hopefully through Germantown, Miami'sburg, West Carrollton, Centerville, Franklin and Springboro, we will get uh, some good people that apply.
Could I chime in, Chief? Ask a question. Did you put that on the Facebook page for the police department also?
I have not put it on the Facebook page yet because it will not go out in those papers until eight thirteen. Uh, on eight thirteen, it will be put on our Facebook page. That way there's no favoritism way. It, it all goes out the same day.
I think it just reaches more people on your Facebook page probably than even the press.
You are correct. It will go out on the Facebook page. I'm just waiting till the day the, all the papers come out too.
Good, thanks.
And that is my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holbrook.
Just have a couple of things this evening. Um, the first is um, I actually reviewed the Township's uh, Dayton Power and Light Utility Bill uh, this morning and uh, unbeknownst to me, we are buying our electric generation through a company called IGS Energy at a rate of point zero six nine nine per kilowatt hour. Uh, Dayton Power and Light's current energy charge is point zero four six cents. So that's approximately a 34% reduction in uh, the electricity generation side um, by the cost of our electric bill. Um, I would recommend to the Board of Trustees to save money. Um, now obviously that's just on the generation side. That's not on the transmission. Um, we can save 34% on the generation side of it. So I would, I would suggest that we switch back to Dayton Power and Light as our energy uh, generation company and transmission.
Jeremy, I have a question. So I've had to deal with this before with family members and um, when I dealt with this specific IGS company before, they have the people sign a contract for so many years. To my knowledge, I don't know if the Township has signed that. Um, but I think that's something, and then if you cancel within the one that uh, relative signed was for three years. In order to get out of that contract, we had to pay a lump sum of money. So I think that's a great idea. I just think that would be something to, to check into. Um, if, if that's the case, maybe it's not.
Okay, I'd have to research when that was done.
Okay.
But I can definitely check into that. Um, if that's not the case and we are not in contract, could I get the Board's approval to take us back to Dayton Power and Light? And if we're still in contract, we can revisit this at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea personally.
Yeah, I appreciate you looking into it and, and paying attention to the line item detail.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Heaton or?
Since this is a financial decision, I'm thinking let's be safe and let's do a resolution number eighteen.
All right, I'll make a resolution, um, 2020, did you say eighteen?
Correct.
Okay, to switch from IGS for a distributor to DPNL.
Generation.
Generation, sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but it needs to be if it's not under contract.
Say that again, Jake?
I said I'll second, but it needs to say as long as we're not under contract.
Got it. Discussion on resolution 2020 eighteen.
I, I'd like to chime in if I could, Mr. Heaton.
Right ahead.
All right, Mark Keener, seventy-eight, sixty-five, Jamaica. Um, as far as I know, there was nothing signed while I was in office. I don't recall ever switching over, so that would be at least four and a half, actually almost five years now. So we should be good there. And uh, Jeremy, when, and I'm sure you'll work with Mr. Heaton on this, um, make sure you take a look at all the accounts because um, the bill you probably looked at was just for the road garage and the one tornado siren. So make sure you take a look at the one uh, that also covers the main building. And then I think there's also two other bills that come in for other um, weather warning sirens. So uh, Mr. Heaton can make sure he gets all the bills for you. You can double check where um, where the contracts for all of those are.
That's a good call, Mark. Um, you're correct in saying that I only looked at the road garage. Um, I will definitely pull those uh, energy bill or the electric bills and take a look at them. And if we do it, we'll do it across the board. And I appreciate that. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even have thought about the uh, weather sirens.
Yeah, so, and, and I do know, I mean, I never signed anything to send back in, so if they're saying that these contracts are, or we're still within, you know, we did this a year ago, then we were slammed on it, you know? Or I think that's the right term when they switch those providers, you know, like your long distance or your electric without your knowledge, so.
I think what happens with Dayton Power and Light and also Vectren is if you don't select a, a um, transmission service for the, for the power itself, uh, you are assigned to a company. And there were four or five different companies that um, are, it's like a pool, I guess. Everybody gets their fair share of those people who haven't contracted with anyone else. Any further discussion of resolution 2020 eighteen? Okay, Mrs. Reed, you ready to vote?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
I'm, was that a yes, Jake?
Yes.
Thank you. You're hard to hear tonight. I'm not sure. You're, you're very garbled.
Okay, I don't know why.
Well, now that's better. And Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 eighteen is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, kind of on that same note, and I don't have it listed on my report and I apologize. I made some calls this morning um, to start working on acquiring uh, bids for the Township's uh, liquid petroleum gas for the 2020 and 21, 2021 heating season. Uh, I think last year we got it for like a dollar nineteen-nine uh, per gallon. Um, like I said, um, I put out some feelers this morning, so hopefully uh, by the next meeting, I'll be able to bring that to the Board. Hopefully we can do, um, last year, I think we did what we called, it's kind of like a contract with Airheart where we didn't pre-buy. We just basically told them how many gallons we were planning on using and then I think it was just a word of mouth that, yeah, we're going to use you for our liquid propane. So um, like I said, I don't want to do any pre-buy because that ties up a lot of money. Um, but I am searching out to see what the best price for uh, liquid propane for this year, the rest of this year and the beginning of next year will be. So I'll, I'll keep you in the loop on that. I was kind of along with our utilities of the DPNL, that's why I brought that up. Um, the only other thing I have was I did get a chance to have a meeting with uh, Mr. Remer on Friday of last week and we sat down and discussed uh, kind of some of the basic workings of the road and service department and the budget. And uh, I appreciated his uh, interest in the department and uh, look forward to having any comments or questions that he might have in the future. And that's all I have.
Hey Jeremy, I just a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, was the Mudlock Road uh, situation taken care of as far as it's concerned?
Yes, and uh, they came out, the contractor came out uh, and spread, tried, tried to basically drive some additional stone into the uh, liquid asphalt that had basically bled up through uh, the street. Um, was it as good as I would have liked? No, not really. Um, but I think there's a lot of factors that we had no control over. Um, I'm hoping to be able to get it striped this year under the Montgomery County contract. Um, but I think it's done bleeding uh, and getting on people's vehicles, so. Hopefully we won't have that problem again. I know this year, our chip seal, we're switching to a different material. So we're going to try that to make sure we don't have those issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is that everything, Mr. Holbrook?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sewell.
Sorry, I had myself muted. Um, before I get started, there is a visitor that had a question uh, about the vehicles um, that we are looking at purchasing. Um, is that okay if I go over that question?
Sure.
Okay, he said, is there an advantage to buying both cars during the same model year? Uh, the Ford model year will likely change around July or August of next year. Could you say that again, Jake?
And I already brought that up during discussions.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, all right. All right, so, and that's all the questions that I see on the chat right now. Um, so uh, on my report, uh, I just have some of the old things. Um, I know I sent out the uh, zoning fee schedule. I hope everybody had a minute to look over that. I did change uh, some of the numbers on that um, between last month's meeting and this month's meeting. Um, did anybody have any questions over that?
Was there a specific reason why some of those were changed?
Yes, so Tyler and I um, had a discussion about them and I had um, things like the variances and conditional uses. Um, those really follow the Um, those really follow the same lines. They go through the same process. Uh, so I just changed those numbers to reflect each other, so it's not a big difference um when I go through the same process for those. Um, another one.
Like the certified letters is a good example.
Yes, so with each of those, I have to send out certified letters. Um, and each certified letter costs almost six dollars um per letter, and that's literally for one envelope in one piece of paper. Um, is six, almost six dollars now. So there is is that. Um, I did have the certified letters um at twenty dollars for ten of them. Uh, but I changed that to fifty dollars for ten of them, and we would still be eating uh some of that cost um on those.
I just, yeah, I was just going to add more color. I mean, Mrs. Reed, Mr. Stubbs, just for your guys' perspective, uh Haley and I did go through line item by line item, just to kind of understand what the thinking was behind it. You know, what was it, two thousand and three, last time these were updated, Haley? Is that right?
Uh, two thousand two or three, yes.
Okay, and and so um what she had done is she pulled together, and I think you can see it in the spreadsheet, several town shares and municipalities, what their fees were. Um, definitely was trying not to be on the high end or low end of most of those, but also was using a cost-based approach of, you know, how much time and effort and and what are you putting into this? And trying to make them reasonable and logical versus each other. So like she said, with the variance and and um what what was the other, conditional use?
Conditional use, yeah.
Yeah, like things like that. If you can make them consistent because they're a consistent amount of work, it just seems logical to our our residents as to why the fees would be what they are. Um, so I I think she had had thought it out pretty well, and and we looked through it, and it makes sense. I just want to give you guys that perspective from my my review with her her on that.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Do you guys have any comments about it or anything?
No, we've had that fee schedule. I know you said you made little changes, but we've had it for quite a while, so.
Right. Yeah, and then I also did um write up a draft copy of what it would actually look like, instead of it being in the spreadsheet format. Uh, I did it in a Word document, just so it's a little bit less messy um to the eye and a little bit more appealing. Um, so hopefully you guys had a minute to look over that. Another old news that I have is I have a pending conditional use at Abundant Life Tabernacle. Um, so we will be going over that. Um.
Haley?
Yes.
Do we want to, they may want to approve the fee schedule, and if so, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, I didn't know if I should ask for that or if I wanted to wait for Tyler.
Um, if 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 anyone is ready to approve the um zoning fee schedule, we will use resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Alright, I'll make a a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen to approve the updated zoning resolution fee schedule.
I will second.
Any discussion?
I trust Tyler and Haley's uh look to it, so I have, I don't have an issue with it.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know uh last year there was a few cases that we have, we had, and we really absorbed a significant amount of cost on that. Um, so I think that this will help everything moving forward, for sure. Thank you guys again. Um, so then the next.
We need to vote, Haley.
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion on resolution twenty twenty nineteen? If not, I'll call for a vote. Mrs. Reed, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Reymard, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Yes, uh, resolution twenty twenty nineteen is approved.
Thank you guys. Uh, then the another thing that's been on my uh report is the uh conditional use um at Abundant Life Tabernacle. Uh, you guys, I will, it's just now getting started in the process. Um, so you guys will uh be hearing about that in the next, probably, I would hope, six to eight weeks. Um, and then I do have some new stuff. Um, there is a pending zoning change on E B Road that is in the process. Uh, I had a single-family home on Conservancy, uh residential additions on Oxford and Cherry, uh a pool on Friend, a deck on Preble County Line, and a pool on E B, or I'm sorry, a pole barn on E B. Um, all permits written in the last thirty days. Uh, then, in addition to that, um I sent out another uh PDF file. Uh, the ladies at the post office uh were telling me about a mailer and a letter machine that we may uh want to look for pricing. I know initially, uh, the letter machine would save us five cents per letter sent, uh, so sometimes that could be significant. Um, I do not have the prices on what the exact machine cost is, but there are a lot of different machines. Um, is that something that you guys would be interested in looking into?
For me, I think it's going to depend on how much is that machine starting out, right? What is our upfront cost to get that machine? And then kind of weigh how many letters are mailed out, or what are the the pros, I guess?
Absolutely. And I can uh look into that and send more detailed information to you guys uh for next month's meeting if you'd like. On my list, um, so I do not have a nameplate um for any meetings. I didn't know if this is something that I should have, if it just got overlooked. Um, obviously, I don't need one right now. Um, but I just didn't know if there was a process for that.
Um, I believe that Lori orders those, and so we also need to double check and make sure, I think, pretty sure. Um, so we also need to double check and make sure that um Mr. Reymard has one as well.
Um, Mrs. Rohrbach has ordered Mr. Reymard's plate. It, I'm not sure whether it's arrived yet. I think it's twenty-five dollars. Um, absolutely. Uh, Mrs. Sewell, if you'll just ask Mrs. Rohrbach, I'm sure she'll take care of that for you.
Okay, I can do that. And last thing on the list, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals had a meeting uh on Thursday uh and had some discussion over the uh vacant seat on their board. Um, and they would uh like to ask for the recommendation of Ms. Valerie Hill to fill that seat. Um, so I just know if that's something you want to do, take care of, Tyler, or?
Yeah, Haley, I appreciate you bringing it up. Um, yes, uh, you know, as everyone knows, uh, Mr. Dunn resigned uh early July, and there was the vacancy. Um, Valerie has served on the Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate for a period of time, and also had Haley's j- job before she had as the zoning inspector, so she has a lot of experience in this area. Um, you know, the zoning appeals thought that she would be a good replacement. I'd called Valerie on Friday and spoke with her. I believe Valerie might be on the call right now, hopefully. Um, and and I would definitely, after speaking with Valerie and Haley and some of the folks on the zoning recommend her uh to be the replacement, to step in from alternate to full-time on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's my recommendation.
And yes, Valerie is on the call.
Yeah, I just.
Is that a motion, Mr. Reymard?
Yes, I'll make a motion to appoint Valerie Hill um as a uh representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I will second, sorry.
Any discussion on the motion?
Valerie does an awesome job. That's a great choice.
The other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any moves? Notion passed. Thank you for serving.
Yeah, I would just say, uh, congratulations, Valerie. We appreciate it. And uh, if you want to say anything, you're more welcome to make a comment now.
Yes, thank you, guys. Um, she has been a wealth of knowledge uh for me in this office uh over the last over year now. Um, so I greatly appreciate uh you guys uh getting her on that board. But that is all that I have for tonight.
Alright. Okay, so I have um to the the JED update, I guess as much of a JED update as I can give. Um, I was emailed a draft, if you will, copy of the JED. It was a draft from March, so it is very much still a working document. Even that document is not up to date as to what has been discussed so far. Um, I believe myself, I I believe all three trustees received that document today um or yesterday. We received it in the last couple of days. Um, and so really, I think that, I know the chiefs of police met, I know that was in the works in May and just kept getting put off, so I'm very happy that that is uh has been taken care of and that that has came to a resolution about the jurisdiction for that. So that was a, one of the key things that needed to be decided for the JED. And now that's decided. And now the main thing that I'm told that needs to be decided is the the money, the percentage of the split of the money that comes from the JED. Uh, I know Mr. Wafsek, I I've been in contact with him, and so moving forward, that way, I think it would be in our best interest to have a meeting, the three of us, with Mr. Wafsek to kind of lay out our pros and cons, or what 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 we're kind of looking for. Um, so that we can all kind of see what the numbers look like. What are things that is a working document? Like I said, it's very fluid. Uh, so that we can sit down and meet and and talk and discuss that. Uh, I think that would be best to get us all three on board. I know Brian Wafsek has been huge and crucial in getting the shed moving and working really hard on it. He's probably the most knowledgeable person on it besides the attorneys and everybody, but um, he's doing a lot of the footwork on it. I think personally, that would be the best um option for us for the township moving forward.
I'm aligned to that. I guess before we go too far, um, you know, with with Chief Ang, he he sent some information to us, but Chief, do you want to kind of summarize your meeting just for the greater good of everyone else on the call? And where that went, how you felt about it?
Sure, July twenty first, uh, I met with Chief McGill and Chief David, uh, Germantown Law Director on shift, and uh Mr. Wafsek was on a conference call. And the initial um setup in the JED was that there would be joint jurisdiction between all three police departments on the JED property. Um, based on our meeting, it was my understanding that everybody believed that that wasn't necessary and that it should not change, and the jurisdiction should remain solely in Germantownship. Um, so uh it was also my understanding that there would there would be a draft that would or should be generated that would reflect that change back to just uh Germantownship Police jurisdiction.
The draft, I should state, the draft that we did receive was dated back to March fourth, I believe, so it is an older draft. Um, there has not been a new one made since your meeting, so um our draft did not go into that, but that's, you know, it's an older one.
So, yeah, just based on, and it was uh everybody got along fabulously. Um, I'd say the meeting was probably probably twenty, thirty minutes in length. Um, so it wasn't even really long because it was about jurisdiction. We got right to the point. Um, discussed it. Um, probably, we met together for probably forty-five minutes to an hour, but um, the rest of it was just small talk of departments that we're dealing with coronavirus, whatnot, so didn't really apply to the JED.
And ultimately, it ended the way you had expected and wanted it to, correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure why joint jurisdiction was added in the first place, but I do have three main issues with the JED. First of all is purpose. There is no purpose in the JED. There is economic development. There is no economic development here. Strictly a redistribution of tax dollars to four different entities. Uh, next, there should be an SRO that's paid for by the JED, if it's going to be established. Um, and seventy-five percent of that salary should be paid for by the JED, um, in my opinion. And lastly, the split percentage uh is incredibly unfair and biased towards the city of Germantown. Fifty-seven percent is not a fair amount to go to the Germ- to the city of Germantown, way over and above. Um, so that is also something that needs to be worked out. Um, I've since added another issue, and that would be uh Denzmore and Shaw, the attorney firm that is has drafted this document, is connected in the racketeering scheme with Larry householders, so I'm not sure um what what that means at this point in time, but it's something that you should all be aware of. Uh, Denzmore and Shaw uh had a partner named Eric Liken. Eric Liken is the treasurer of Generation and Now, as well as the group that offered the asset attack fee, and they are included in this how, uh, the household racketeering scheme. So that's just something for you guys to be aware of. You worked there until twenty nineteen.
Okay, so and I think that um your concerns, Mr. Stubbs, uh would be best um spoke so that Mr. Wafsek could hear them and maybe talk through them. Like I said, I know you said the split was a an issue with you, and that's very fluid, is my understanding of it. Every time I've spoke to Mr. Wafsek, uh, I believe he's reached out to you a few times, so maybe just sit down and try to hash these things out and try to work through this document would be the best case for the the township moving forward.
They had two of the three of us that would go with whatever. So I appreciate that Brian's willing to sit down and uh and discuss. I also have a secondary option, five, five-year JED only after construction. It's a significant amount of money for five years, and then you lose money. Um, have five years to plan for that. So that's just something else I'm working on. Valley View's not even applied for this yet, too, which is also an issue. Um, but Valley View would be taxing their employees one point five percent for the Germantown with the Germantown income tax credit reduced. They're actually be paying two point four percent income tax. At some point, Valley View's going to have to initiate this, because without Valley View, this is going anywhere.
Well, I have spoke to the superintendent. This has been quite a while ago, uh, Mr. Richards, and he was on board with this whole JED um thing. I mean, he is staying out of it. This is up to the the different municipalities and townships, so. But my understanding is that Valley View, the school district is okay and comfortable with uh with that. He said that his employees are aware of the tax or the additional taxes you're stating to some of the employees. So they're aware and they're on board with this.
So.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
Yep. Okay, so this meeting, uh, this meeting you're planning, is that going to be an open public, public meeting when you're discussing the JED? Uh, it's not going to be a meeting where you start it and go into executive session, is it? You know, to me, it should be as open as possible.
My understanding, Mr. Cross, is a once, once the things are set, set as guidelines or what we propose as a JED, there has to be public hearing at that point in time for the JED. So I I, not that I would say we don't want the public to comment at this point, but I I want to make sure that we at least have the trustees a such a opportunity to try to align on what might be best to present, so we don't have a lot of confusion. And then, once we get to the stage where we have a public hearing, that will give ample opportunity for everyone to give feedback, and we can still adjust, but I I feel like Jake has significant concerns, and I think they're legitimate. Um, I definitely have responses to many of them. I hadn't heard about the attorney firm piece, so I appreciate that perspective, but um, Jake, I think, Mr. Stubbs, if we sat down and had this discussion, I think it it would be clear as to why there's a lot of merit to the JED. Um, I think uh your concerns are very valid, although um I think, you know, Germantown and uh and Farmersville would feel very differently about losing that revenue, even if it's a five-year period from now, just as if we had revenue coming in here that was taken away, and we had five years to adjust, we would much rather uh perpetuate that revenue for a longer period of time. I also think Germantown has the ability to change their credit that they grant to their citizens. Um, if they're able to participate in this JED, they may actually do something with that credit. If they're able to participate in this JED, they may actually do something with that credit to where the both employees of the high school and residents of Germantown wouldn't be taxed at 2.5%. As you mentioned, I think there's a lot of things we can work through, but these are exactly the things that I think we need to sit down with Mr. Wofsek and the other municipalities and try to iron out. Because I think there's a logical approach. They can land us all on a much better place, long term, even the residents, to where they're not. Because if we don't do a JED, it sounds great to the citizens, but it doesn't mean that the Germantown and Farmersville won't have to turn around and propose a higher income tax to their citizens because they're lost revenues. So I think we need to sit down and marriage to the discussion. I think you have good points and we need to talk through them.
Well, and that's if you're in the township, you need to hire a new officer, the $22,000 and I cover a third of that. So my concerns are for Germantownship. Or for Germantownship. So if we're going to lose money in this job.
Absolutely. And I, Mrs. Reed, you, you know more, had more discussions with Mr. Wofsek. I've only talked to him a couple of times, both in, you know, past with the, the school levy, talking through it in that perspective, but also more recently trying to get caught up on this. And and my understanding is he's open to talk the split. So I think your, your questions on the revenue split are 100% legitimate, just as your other concerns are. But I think all these things can be ironed out if we sit down and have a logical discussion.
Fine, and I'm the new person, I just over the internet.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I appreciate that.
Sorry. My, my fear, I think it's great, I think we should meet. I don't want to put this off because once they break ground on this school, I'm not sure how in it the superintendent is. So I really just think, get this conversation going and see, see where that takes us.
Property where they want to get.
So that's something maybe it would also be good if Mr. Richards was somehow involved in this conversation because you seem to have some questions about, from the Valley View aspect of if they have the land and taxing teachers and things. So maybe he also needs to be included on that. Can help maybe hash out some of those, those concerns that you have. So as long as the trustees are okay with, with doing this, I will reach out to the other entities and see if we can put some type of meeting together to help, help answer some questions for us on where this JED is at and maybe some numbers, kind of get this ball rolling or, or just answer some questions.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be, I won't say expedite, it's a little too aggressive, but it definitely needs to be somewhat of an urgent matter. Because as trustees roll on and off, Jake's concerns are everyone's concerns, you know? And we, we have to rediscuss and renegotiate all these types of things again. And so moving forward, putting this into some kind of cement and, and moving on. I mean, the levy's passed, there's, there's no point to delay this any further in my perspective.
This discussion right here is the only discussion by Valley View. And Germantown, as far as I know.
I'm sorry, Jake, I couldn't hear most of what you said.
The only discussion about this JED has come from us since, since March. Germantown hasn't talked about it. Valley View hasn't talked about it. In the minutes I've read, it's not even been discussed if he doesn't praise you.
Mr. Stubbs, I believe Mr. Wofsek has reached out to you several times because he thinks that you have some concerns. And so before they are moving forward, they are waiting to hear from you. I think there's been calls, texts and emails that have went unreturned. So that, that is part of that. I know the hiccup in May was the, the police officers needed to meet. And that was put off, you, you didn't have the draft. And so that was put off until July. So that's why the JED is kind of put and put on hold quite a bit. I just think setting up a meeting and getting us all on the same page would be very beneficial.
Well, putting the chief's meeting off until whenever it happened. Yes, I asked for a copy of the draft on May 8th. And I received it today after I once again asked again for it. And it's not updated. And, you know, it, it's hard. When, when the initial chief's meeting was set up, it was supposed to be your chiefs only. You've been Chief Dave, Chief McGill. And then to find out that the law director attended and that a councilman attended after the fact is, is kind of discouraging because that was, that, that wasn't in the original agreement. I would have come had I known I was allowed to, but I was respecting what we decided on, which was a chief-only meeting. So for me to ask for things in writing at this point, I don't think is unreasonable. But to not take the house is not, at this point, when I've been misinformed by people at the township as well as in the city. I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for, for things in writing at this point. And to answer your previous question, I did talk with Mr. Wofsek via text message today. So thanks for bringing that up.
So I think that it's fine that you ask for things in writing. I just don't, I, I think that that should not, your decision should not hold up the JED for four entities.
So I, I, I think we, we all agree that it merits further discussion. I guess the only other question I have for Jake or Mr. Stubbs, do you, what is your thought if, if we didn't put a JED in place? What's the alternative? If we still have to cover with police at the high school site, well, now the new K through 12 site? What, what would you be your, your, your proposal to recover any expenses that we incur from the township on the police side?
Well, that would have to be discussed with Anzig in the future. I'm not about what ifs right now. You know, Germantown and Farmersville, they have to be reasonable in this. This can't happen without Germantownship. And so far, and they've known, again, since January, and so you got here, that they had two of the three of us in the bag with whatever they said they were willing to go along with. So and it just, it just has to be fair. It has to be fair in the end, it has to be fair.
100% agree. Yeah, I appreciate, listen, I'm not trying to be combative. I was just curious if you had another perspective. I mean, at the end of the day, let's have the chat, let's just have the discussion. I think there's a way for us all to share in the revenue that is not, like I said, unfair to the citizens and makes it to where they're not going to face an income tax later, if that is really a true concern. And beyond that, it covers us, which is our primary concern for the expenses that we'll incur. And I think that's, that's the discussion we need to have. So if you guys want to chat anymore, that's fine. I, I, I'm happy to move forward with just a chat with the other townships and municipalities.
Okay, I will get that email sent out or the, the ball rolling, I guess, and see time or who all can attend that.
And to Mr. Stubbs' point, I mean, I don't know if there's any procedural issue with it, but Mr. Richards, I think, would be happy to attend. And he seems very logical from the discussions I've had with him. So if it would, you know, help move it along quicker, I think it'd make sense to add him to the agenda.
All right, my next thing on the agenda is the Senior Center. So it's really the Senior Center bus. It is on the GovDeal site as of Friday and had not sold or the auction was not up yet. So I do not have an update on the Senior Center bus. The Senior Center, I did meet with Shinoah and Mrs. Gilliland. And that was still shut down, I believe, per the governor's orders. It was not able to open back up yet. They, they are still doing, they're calling all of the members or the people that frequent the Senior Center. They've offered to do grocery delivery, drop them off their medicine and try to still stay connected with the seniors as much as they can, obviously safely. So they are still operating at a much different, it looks very different, but they're still trying their best to, to reach out to them and provide services to them. I, I just had one question for Chief real quick. I think that was it. The position was posted for, or it is going to be, I apologize, going to be posted. Is there any timeline for interviews or anything like that?
At this point, no, excuse me. I wanted to get those out, they give two weeks. I would say probably early to mid-September, we'll establish who's available for and set up the interview process. So that's probably going to be, I would say probably mid-September would be the interviews.
Okay, all right, that, that's my question. I think it would be nice, even if, I don't, I assume you'll have several different interview slot, time slots of different ones of us could attend at different times. Because you never know who's going to be over the police next year. That way, we're all kind of part of that. So just looking back over my notes. Oh, I do have one more thing. The firefighters did take or took occupancy of the new fire station. I believe within the last few days. So everything's moving along with that, and they seem to be very pleased with, with that. We were hoping to go through and be able to tour the fire station at our, at our meeting, but we haven't had meetings with all the coronavirus stuff going on. So hopefully I can go in and check out the new fire station soon, but they seem to be enjoying it. That is all that I have. Mr. Stubbs.
All right, a couple of things tonight. Cemetery met in person tonight. I'd like to welcome Bonnie Pupel to the board. It was her first meeting. Lynn did an excellent job when he was on the board. Very knowledgeable. We had a rough spot, rough patch, and now we've got Bonnie on there. And happy to have Bonnie. I think it's going to go really well with her. We discussed tonight, there was an error from 1861 that we had to resolve at the cemetery. Someone was buried in the wrong spot in the, in the records box. So yeah, 1861, 150 years ago, we had, that was something we dealt with in the last month. They poured the concrete for the headstones, then they got caught up with mowing. They had military pla, a few military plaques to set out as well. Other than that, the cemetery is doing really well. They've done a great job keeping up. It was dry for a while, but then that rain got the grass up on them. But it looks, it looks really nice. Mark Siniker and the staff is doing a fantastic job as usual. So no complaints down there. Cool meeting, the city decided to swing it on me this month. And Mr. Raymer, you said earlier that other entities, let's go back to the JED, sorry. Other entities wouldn't be happy losing money in a five-year span, but a five-year forecast things that we've dealt with in the last couple of years. Loss of the local government fund for the department, as well as a dispatch fee for the police department that came out of nowhere and cost our budget 30,000 a year on that or so. So we've dealt with these as well. I mean, I'm not saying that this is the way to go for a government not to be able to handle a small loss like they're, they'd say 80,000 with a budget their size. I, I mean, we've, we've made it work before. So I think they could, if we can get it to work. I already mentioned the Dinsmore and Shaw. And that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Raymer.
Yeah, Mr. Stubbs, I, I actually agree with that completely. You'll know when I was campaigning for the levy committee to try to drive this forward. A lot of people had issues with the JED, and that was my exact response, that the amount of revenue lost will not bankrupt any of our municipalities. On the flip side, if it leads them to make other decisions that, you know, adversely affect people, I think we can, you know, mutually sit down and come to a reasonable agreement. And I won't say that the JED's 100% the right way to go in my mind right now, but I think it makes a lot of logical reasons as to why. So I understand your perspective. I, I appreciate the perspective and the points and happy to discuss it going forward. As far as the other things, zoning, the only thing that Haley and I wanted to chat that we haven't yet on the zoning piece is Haley, we had mentioned, you know, people being able to reach out to you, especially in the coronavirus time. And if we need to do anything. We had talked, Mr. Stubbs, Mrs. Reed, I, I know at times you'll probably have people reach out to you and say they're having trouble reaching out to Haley or whatever. So we were checking to see what ways she can be contacted. And if there's ways that we can make her more accessible, especially with coronavirus. We did go out to the, the website. And there was a couple of things we thought about doing. The, the number listed on there, we tested it, I called it myself and checked her and went direct to her voicemail. She received the voicemail that I left for her and was able to get that without any issues. So we think that the, the phone number listed there is fine. But I think you were mentioning Haley to add a different cell phone. Is that correct as well as a contact?
Yes, so if you call that number that's listed on the website, the voicemail also gives you my work cellphone number. So then I recommended, maybe we list my work cellphone number also on the website.
In addition, you know, she mentions on the recorded voicemail that, you know, due to coronavirus, that there are no office hours now and that she'll make appointments with you. There was the emails listed on the, the website. There is one phone number. If we add a second phone number, wanted to talk to, you know, both the other trustees and make sure you guys felt like that was sufficient. Or if you guys have any other suggestions as to how to contact Haley. I think she's trying to be responsive and it seems as though all the things are in, in motion right now that are, she's been contacted about. So if you guys have any other thoughts or concerns or questions there.
Can I put one more thing in there, too? My name is also not listed on the zoning part of the website. So I didn't know if that might be helpful in some way also.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with listing another cell number, especially give the citizens another way to reach you if they need it. Make it available to them. I know I had previously talked to Haley about possibly setting up some office hours and being in her office. And I've seen places put a sign on the door that says, you know, these are my office, I'm here, just call this number and I will come and let you in or come outside to speak to you. And that way, you're, you're limiting people being in the building in close quarters, but she is still there. That way, people can still go and see her during some office hours, even if it's only two, three hours a week. I, I think that might be beneficial for the public to have a person that they can drive up during certain hours and go speak to.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's completely up to you guys. Whatever you want me to do, I'm fine with whichever avenue we take.
Mr. Stubbs, do you have any other perspective?
I mean, whatever is best, put your cellphone number on there. I don't think that necessarily needs to come to me. I could have just been, um, just, I'm sorry to do it, so.
Okay. All right, Haley, I, I think that makes sense. Let's, let's try to get it added. Is it Lori or am I speaking out of turn? Is she the right contact for the website to, to add some information?
Lori has historically been the one that updates the websites.
And Haley, I guess my perspective, and if you guys have other, you can comment. But i- if, if no one's requesting office hours right now, I understand their perception. But I think, you know, with COVID, it's pretty reasonable not to have them if it's not like there's a demand for me. If we were asking, if you were calling and saying, hey, you know, we're having trouble getting ahold of Haley and we can't meet with her. I, I think that's absolutely a perspective that we need to add some hours and say, well, she's in our office at this time. But I haven't personally heard that yet. So if we hear that, I think that's something we should do. But for the time being, I'm, I'm satisfied with just adding more contact information and just making sure you're responsive to any requests you have.
Yeah, I think in office, I've only probably had one meeting, like one appointment every other week on average since all of this started.
I'm comfortable with that moving forward, Mr. Raymer.
Sounds good. The other, the other items, so I did meet with Chief Anzig and Mr. Holbrook. It was a good discussion. I just wanted to, you know, basically introduce myself and also get to know them. You know, the biggest thing for me, being new to this role, you know, I am a financial person. So I, I've spent time with Mark and I, I'm still trying to gather financials and, and talk with him and get perspective on historical information. You know, what I promised both Chief and Mr. Holbrook, just for Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs' information is, is to, you know, trend some data over the last at least five years and maybe longer if it's needed. And try to understand how much revenues we've had coming in. And to Jake's points, how much, how those things changed over time. And then also how we responded with our expenditures. And where does that leave our fund balance every year? Is it trending up, down, or, or neutral sideways? And I, I have seen in two places where I think it merits a lot more attention. And they're with some of our biggest budgets, and that's with both police and roads, which is not surprising. So I think, you know, police has had increasing revenues over the last five years, almost consistently every single year. Like a 10% CAGR growth, you know? Whereas the roads is opposite story, where it's trending down. And so I'm sure there's millions of reasons why. And I'm definitely not prepared to discuss those things at this time. But just to let everyone know, I mean, that's, that's where I see myself being able to add more specific value is what is the long-term gain in these areas? And how do we make sure that we're staying funded with the, the levies we have in place? And, and if so, if we need additional funding, we need to be able to And if so, if we need additional funding, we need to be able to communicate that transparently to our contingent, and they need to be aware of what's the reasons why, and how's it changed over time? And what we have done to extend our budget. And so that's someplace that I plan to put focus into and continue to meet with Mr. Heiston and try to gather information and put our heads together on what we can bring to the other trustees in the community as potential options. The last thing I wanted to chat, so I'll pause there, and just if anybody has any questions or concerns.
I appreciate you taking the time and initiative to do that, and having the knowledge to be able to do those types of things.
Thank you. The last thing I wanted to chat just briefly tonight, and just more to keep on the docket as we move forward, because I know, again, this is one of those things, like Chief Anzig's request is, we don't meet very often, and so these things come and go very quickly, and we don't have a lot of time to respond to them, but it's the CARES Act, Mark had given, Mr. Heiston had given information earlier on about the money we're receiving. We need to talk, I think, a little bit if we have ideas on where that money can be spent. I haven't read extensively, but I have read, you know, the frequently asked questions that they put out in mid-July, just to try to get my bearings on what we could spend it on. One thing I will mention, and I don't think this is a first alternative, but it could be a secondary or tertiary alternative, is we could transfer unused funds, I believe, to other municipalities or even the local school district, which those are other places here in our close region that are experiencing a lot of expenses, you know, as they get ready for back-to-school and those types of things. So if we have things, I definitely think we need to spend them in the township and use that money here. But I definitely wouldn't want it to float back to the federal government without being able to transfer those funds to another municipality or local school district that could use them here locally.
The expense they're going to have, however they go back to school, is going to be greater than they anticipated. Also, I would suggest, I don't know if you have the High Township Association Tyler, but you'll hire a township associate for the website, sending out emails with about funding, which cares specifically. So if you prefer to hire a township associate, I think you'll find information that you can find useful.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would ask Mr. Heiston, is there anything that you've kind of earmarked at this point as far as expenses that we have within the township that might qualify? Or is that work that we need to go ahead and do?
I don't think we have a tremendous amount of previously spent items that can be now transferred and used under the coronavirus fund, but there are a few. The very first one we probably did was when we did the WebEx license to have these virtual meetings, that's absolutely an expense that can be covered. Anybody, any employee who might contract the virus or have a family member contracted, or for some other reason, be put under the 14-day quarantine, those salary dollars can most likely be used and paid for under the coronavirus money. And of course, the reason why we take the money is we don't know what the future is going to hold. So between now and October, we'll not only see what else comes down the pipe, but also I'm going to spend some time looking at what we've already spent and see if there's anything that might apply and be used with those funds. I know that Lori has reached out, I believe, to all of the police department to see what, if anything, they might have incurred that she isn't even aware of. And Jeremy, I know I sent an email about this a while back, and Haley, if you have anything, of course, you need to let me know also.
So I assume the most obvious things, cleaning products, masks, thermometers, you know, things like that can be paid for out of that CARES fund. Are we able to, I don't want to say stockpile, but are we able to buy ahead, you know, a few months so that we have that? If we need it, if we need more.
I would say that those costs would be able to be charged against the coronavirus fund, assuming that those are costs that we would not have ordinarily incurred. It is not to pay for normal cleaning items, but anything unusual, extra that we've had to buy, PPP if we've PP if we've had any that we've had to purchase, those things are definitely able to be used and paid for by this money.
Okay.
So definitely not making a motion this time, but I guess at the next meeting, being September, if we haven't earmarked, you know, a large sum of that $26,000, I think we should all think about, would we be willing to try to transfer that money to Valley View Local School District, as Mr. Stubbs mentioned, and then Mark, Mr. Heiston, should we look into what would be required to get that, you know, administratively to happen? So like I said, obviously not asking for it to be a motion this time, but I think we should think about that moving into the September meeting.
Can I say something? So our October meeting will be three days before the deadline to appropriate.
It's October 15th, correct?
That's, I believe that's correct, yeah.
But we will be meeting in September, correct, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Raymer, and I think I need to go back and review the points you're making about the transfer of funds. As I remember reading it, but it's been a month or two since I did review all the paperwork. I think that it can possibly be transferred to entities that we have relationships with, but I don't know whether it can go to just any municipality or school. So as an example, I think if the city of Germantown is incurring extra costs in the fire EMS department, or in the parks area, or anything else that we have a joint levy with, the road area, I think those funds could probably be transferred to the city. I don't know, without researching again and a little further, whether it could go to the school.
So I agree that it is a little bit arbitrary and abstract in the way it's read here, and I couldn't find and didn't find in the time I researched a very specific guidance, but it just says here, may a unit of local government receiving a fund payment transfer funds to another unit of government? Yes, for example, a county may transfer funds to a city, town, or school district within the county, and a county or city may transfer funds to its state, provided that the transfer qualifies as necessary expenditure incurred, blah, 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 blah. For example, a transfer, and it talks about how they can spend that money. So you may be 100% correct, and we may have to have some kind of stipulation of relationship, and maybe we don't have that. But I assume with Valley View Local School District within Germantown ship, at least the high school, that we would be able to transfer to them, is my assumption from reading this, but that is an assumption, because it doesn't mention the local school district.
Now that you brought it up, I would tend to agree that that's possibly something we could do. And with all of these, anything that's not straightforward, we've been advised to get an opinion from the prosecutor to back up whatever decision we make. If we decide to consider the school or any other entity, I think we'll probably go to Mr. Peterson and make sure that he's in agreement with what our plan would be.
Makes sense. Okay, that's all I had, Mrs. Reed.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other new business? Or old business? I'm not hearing anything, so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:40.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I assume no one opposed, so we are adjourned at 8:40. Thank you, Raymer.